I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Starkey.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Hatton.
Here.
Mr. Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lamack.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holste.
Here.
Mr. Sherwin.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we start, I'd like to take a few moments of silence in honor of a...
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Doesn't sound like it.
A Davie pioneer, Richard McCall, passed away yesterday. There will be a celebration of life for him this Monday at Old Davie School at 11:00 AM. And as everybody would know, and we know that the Old Davie School was very, very special to him. He spent many, many hours there working on it. So if we just take a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. The first thing this evening is a presentation from Representative Robin Bartleman. This is going to be made by her aide, Brianna Velez, from District 103. You got the, you got the mic.
Hello, everybody. Hello, council members. My name is Brianna Velez. I'm with Representative Bartleman's office. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today because there is a zero-waste Broward County meeting that she felt she needed to be at, and we split ourselves two ways today. But really, this meeting, it's not so much a presentation, but just to introduce myself to the people of Davie. I started about, I want to say, three, four months ago, and we've made sure to come to all the council meetings to make sure that everyone from the town and cities know who I am and know who wants to help them and know who's doing this job, whether it's helping the constituents of the community or going to events or being a friendly face to listen to what people are going through. I don't think I've met many of you. She represents a very small percentage of Davie, but I know she cares about you guys as much as she cares about all the others. If anyone, any constituents are watching this and they need help with any thing or any issue, you can feel free to call our office or email me at brianna, B-R-Y-A-N-N-A dot Velez, V-E-L-E-Z, at myfloridahouse.gov. I have some cards. I don't have as many as I wish I did, but if anybody wants a card, feel free to raise their hand. I have five, so.
You can leave some at the desk.
Okay.
We'll have them on hand. Thank you very much.
And you most certainly need to give one to the lady up front here in the light blue jacket. She's our government liaison.
Leona. Okay, awesome. Awesome, yes. I think we've emailed.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's just what we came here to do today, just to introduce me, so everyone can put a face to the name. I know I've been speaking to Ms. Leona Henry, but that's what we're here for, and thank you for having me.
Yeah, I had wanted to attend some of those meetings, but they always end up being on a council meeting night.
Yeah.
It says zero waste, but just tell Representative Bartleman what a great job she did down in Dade County. I was watching that on TV, so.
Yeah, it was, you know, we haven't come to anything conclusive yet, but it was definitely a win for the people of Broward County.
That was important, because they were planning on voting.
It was very important. I was there too. Pretty much, I was there from 7:00 AM to 5:45 PM. I met Robin at 5:45 AM, and we were there the whole day, and just seeing how much she works and loves Broward County is really inspiring.
We appreciate her efforts, and welcome, and we're sure we'll see a lot of you. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Eric? We have one tomorrow.
Oh, sure.
Okay, we're going to go over to...
That's her.
...items that need to be tabled, withdrawn, or added. Staff is requesting to add item 26 to the consent agenda. This is a hold harmless agreement. May I have a motion in a second?
Motion to add item 26, hold harmless agreement.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And then staff is requesting to table number 20, which is a rezoning to January 15th. It's a second and final reading, and that has to do with the timing and the advertising, because it has to go to the state, so that's why it's January 15th. May I have a motion?
Motion to table number 20 rezoning for Shalimar.
To January 15th.
January 15th.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's, did we have to do a roll call on that because of the, of being an ordinance?
It's a public hearing item, Mayor, so yes.
Yeah, okay, so do a roll call, please.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, I'm pulling item number 14 off the consent agenda. Does anyone else have anything they need to pull?
No.
Seeing none? Seeing none? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 14?
Still moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll do 14 when we do the... It's companion is number 16, so that's, that would be next, right?
I want to, I want to just say thank you to Grace Gargosa. Thank you for adding that item that we spoke about. It's approved, so thank you. I'm sure the employees will appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take 16 and 14 together, and I believe Mr. Holste wants to make a presentation.
Did we want to have the attorney read the ordinance first?
Okay, we can do that. Mr. Sherwin, would you please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the following sections, Chapter 12 Land Development Code, Article 12, subdivisions, site plans, and certificates of use, Division 3 Site Plan Requirements and Procedures, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, this was, this is a second and final reading. It was approved on the first reading four to one. I'll have you do it before I open the public hearing. It's up to me?
Your pleasure, yes.
Okay. Is there any member of the public here who wishes to speak for or against number 16? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Philip Holste, Assistant Town Administrator. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting two items. Item number 14, which is a town hall design-build contract with Kaufman-Lynn, and item number 16, that's the second reading of the proposed ordinance change that offers an alternative site planning process for town facilities. First, I want to review item 16, the proposed ordinance. The proposed ordinance would create an exemption in the site plan approval requirement for developments involving town facilities on town-owned land. Basically, the town could follow an alternative site review process as appropriate to the particular facility. Currently, the town exempts parks and open space properties, town open space parks and open space facilities, from the site plan process. So for the town hall project, which you'll be considering tonight, the alternative process is based upon the town council direction that occurred at the first reading of the ordinance on July 24th, 2024. So the first item was a 30% design and site plan for the project. Town council actually already approved a 30% design when Justin Architects was putting together the DCP, the Design Criteria Package, for a town hall. You actually made that approval in 2022. But what we'll be showing you tonight as part of the design-build contract is the design by Song and Associates, who's the new architect taking over the project. So tonight, we'll be accomplishing that 30% task with your approval. Subsequently, we bring this project back three more times at 50%. It will go through the Development Review Committee, which is a staff review committee for the technical disciplines. We'd have individual town council member meetings behind the scenes, and then publicly, we would have the presentation at the town council meeting to get your collective feedback. So that would occur at the 50%, 80%, and finally, 95% design for the project. So before I proceed to item number 14, I just wanted to ask if there's any questions regarding the ordinance.
About the ordinance, no.
No question, but just a statement, and I want to thank you, because I had originally not been so excited about that process going forward in future projects as well. And with these built-ins that you've put in now with the 30%, 50%, 80%, 95%, and the council's review on those, at those times, I think it's answered or addressed or can or possibly will address any concerns that any of us may have going forward. So I appreciate that you all took the time to actually build that in, and thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you. So moving on to item number 14. In April 2024, the town council approved the negotiation of the town hall design and deal contract with Kaufman-Lynn as the number-one ranked proposer. The Kaufman-Lynn team includes Song and Associates as a design architect for the project as we proceed. Following your approval back in April 2024, the town and Kaufman-Lynn negotiated the agreement that you'll be considering tonight. During that process, we utilized outside counsel of Smith-Curry during, during the negotiations. So for the design-build contract, I just wanted to introduce in attendance tonight we have Nathan Coker from Kaufman-Lynn, and then we also have Jenna Lanigan from Song and Associates. I also wanted to acknowledge Chris Horton from Smith-Curry, who's in the back, who helped the town during the negotiations. I also want to thank and acknowledge Ozda Loria and Jerry Diaz from Public Works, Brian O'Connor, Rebecca Sevier, and Jenna Albers from Budget and Finance, and Phil Sherwin from the Town and Attorney's Office for their participation and support throughout the negotiations. The town and the top-ranked firm Kaufman-Lynn have reached an agreement for the design-build in the amount of $56,465,874 that's shown in Exhibit P in your backup. These values match what Kaufman-Lynn's proposal was from November of 2023. The agreement price includes an owner contingency in the fixed amount of $4,934,418. This contingency is intended to be utilized by the town for town-approved change orders in accordance with the executed contract agreements. This contingency is included in the agreement price and is intended to cover any unanticipated expenses in an expeditions manner as an act to delay construction. Used contingency fund will always be memorialized through an approved change order. In addition, as per the agreement, the cost of the premium to provide builder's risk for the project will be paid out of the owner's contingency. The cost of the project also includes add alternates for Falk-built walls, additional five-year warranty on major equipment, the addition of a service elevator to the project, and then basically the flood design for the 25-year, 25, 25-year, three-day storm alternate. So substantial completion of the project is anticipated to occur 1,023 days from the date of the word of this agreement start, which would be tonight. 100% design is scheduled for, sorry, is scheduled for June of 2027. As mentioned previously on the previous item, item number 16, Kaufman-Lynn and Song will make presentations at the town council. We're doing the 30% presentation tonight, and then we'll continue with that 50, 80, and 95% at future council meetings. And then on, obviously, the, the other side, there's some penalties built into the contract, which we hope we'll never have to avail ourselves for. But basically, there's liquidated damages of $4,000 per day for delays in achieving that 100% construction documents, and $8,000 per day for delays in achieving substantial completion. These liquidated damages are capped at $2.3 million. So I want to touch on the design now. Just, I'm going to be doing a comparison between the 30% design that was prepared by Justin Architects and then the 30% design by Song and Associates. Justin Architects could not participate in the DCP since they prepared the, and helped us with that initial 30%. So a new architect had to be chosen moving forward to the 100% design, which has previously mentioned in Song and Associates. Their design protects all the trees that were identified in the DCP. There's an additional two trees that'll be protected. It maintains the shutters as well as the covered walkway, which was a source of discussion prior to our meeting tonight. As with stands today, the proposed town hall is 83,600 square feet, and as you can see, it's laid out per floor. So I'm going to go into the Justin Architects' design and the Song's design. When you make your motions tonight related to the two items for item 14 and 16, I'll also be asking you to make a separate motion related to the 30% design, including the site plan. That's something we'll be asking you at the 50%, 80%, and 95% moving forward. So the Justin Architects is a refresher of what you approved back in January of 2022. This is the site plan, as you see, from the new town hall to the Bergeron Rodeo Grounds. And this was a rendering of the new town hall that was part of the DCP, looking north towards the Bergeron Rodeo Grounds. And then this is the view you would see from Orange Drive. So just going back quickly, I wanted to touch on a few design elements that were included in this design. It captured the elements of the Western theme manual with the maintenance-friendly faux wood and stacked stone. The town hall also incorporated major Western theme characteristics, such as large roof overhangs, covered porches, metal roofs, a clock and wind vane. In addition, we tied the old town hall to the new town hall with the entryway, as you could see, where we maintained the entryway from the old town hall to convey the feeling of walking through our past to enter our future. So now I'm going to touch on the proposal or the proposed 30% for Song and Associates. I'm going to start with the site plan. Again, the site plan is very similar to what you saw from Justin Architects. The two big differences is, as part of their proposal, they have a pavilion that's located on the walkway going from the town hall to the rodeo arena. They also added a small plaza for food trucks if we wanted to have those types of events in the parking lot of future town hall. Next, this is a rendering, the Song rendering of the town hall, looking again north towards the rodeo arena. And this is just a zoomed-in of the entryway to the town hall. I would just highlight that, obviously, there's a difference between this entryway versus the Justin Architect entryway. The big differences we would highlight is it has more natural lighting, airflow, and walking space. Obviously, there's a difference in the facade, which I'll touch on as I proceed in the presentation. This is another depiction of the main entrance and exit to the town hall. Next, there is a pavilion I referenced already between the town hall and the rodeo arena. It's been added to emphasize the features. The features that were in the Justin Architect design were part of the town hall. In this case, Song has designed it where it would be part of a pavilion that's on that walkway between town hall and the rodeo grounds. It'll be used as a gathering site, similar to the pavilions that were at the old town hall, and this is their, their proposal for that pavilion. And here's another graphic that just shows the location of the pavilion in relationship to the entryway to the new town hall. And then finally, this is what you'd see from Orange Drive in terms of the new town hall. Again, the landscape doesn't exactly match what will be there, because we'll have, we'll definitely have less palm trees between town hall and the new, Orange Drive, based on the trees that we're keeping as part of the project. So for tonight's discussion, we anticipated, we wanted to get your direction on two, to the items that were noticeably different between the Justin Architect 30% design and the Song 30% design. And that had to do with the entry, entry facade, which here is a comparison between the two facades from Justin and Song. And then the other significant addition was that pavilion between town hall and the rodeo grounds. Obviously, if there's anything else you want to discuss, we can discuss that tonight and get your direction. But those were the items we wanted to highlight at this time. So Mayor, I'll turn it to you for any feedback or the rest of council.
Okay. As everybody knows, one of the things that I asked for specifically when we were designing a new town hall was to have the entrance way a replica of what we had in the old town hall. I'm a little disappointed. I like the, this concept. I love it. But I also feel that it, we could have that, but I also would like something similar at, at the entrance. The... I like the idea that it's more open and it's maybe brighter, but I had asked Phil to try to find a way that we could compromise and bring that feature back to just beneath the clock and then have some of the posts, you know, look like they were wooden, like the old town hall. Do you have that picture?
Yes, I have that slide.
It's funny you should say that. That's exactly what I was saying, too, when I met with staff. If we could do a little bit of both, so I'm glad you... Wow, I like that.
So I'll, I'll give credit to Leona Henry. She put together this graphic for me.
And of course, it's not going to be exactly like that, but...
I agree, though.
Yeah, based on the time we had, we thought this was a very good depiction of what was, I think, the desire of council.
We could always work on it a little more at 50% if we had to, right?
Though, I think seeing this tonight, the architect can work on this between 30 and 50%, knowing what the town council's desire is, but at least this gives them a good starting point.
Yeah, so, you know, and the fact that it's a little more open and it kind of, as you enter, you're, you've got the old and the new together, so, you know, I, I, I would be able to go along with that. But I'd like to keep the other one, the, the pavilion, and then instead of town hall, put Cowboy Town on it, or, you know.
Did somebody read our minds? I think we've been working together too long.
But, you know, because we've branded it, we've branded it, and that's us. And I think, I think that would be a nice addition.
Those are great suggestions, and we'll incorporate that when you see the 50% in a few months.
Anybody else?
We must read each other's minds.
It's because we've been working together too long.
Too long. 23-plus. Anyway, here's...
Anyway.
I, I agree, and I've listened to a lot of what we've said during our workshops, too, and I think that the pavilion adds a nice area for everybody to congregate, too. And I like the openness of the Song design, but with that element up there, too. So I think that works nicely. It, it looks good.
Yes, dear. The glass that's up on the top underneath the overhang there, is that two things of glass?
Sorry, just going back to get a better...
What was the question?
That's part of the entryway. That's, it's a glass wall.
Well, I know you got the doors on the bottom, but are there two sets of glass, or is it just glass with a wood frame?
Are you talking about the entryway?
Yeah.
Yeah, go back to the, the one where you was. No, there. Okay, see where, right, right underneath the clock.
Everything's glass at the entryway.
Okay, so can we have some kind of etching with the horses or something on the glass?
That's definitely...
Up there, not on the doors, because I know with security, you want to be able to see in.
No, I understand. You're talking about like, because it's about 15...
The town insignia is there, right in the middle.
Is that inside the building?
Is that what that is?
I think it's a reflection of the clock, actually.
Oh, okay.
But that's about 15 feet up, and that would be appropriate to consider something like that. So that's something, you know, Song is hearing that feedback, and we can incorporate something like that.
And having the town seal there, too, right in the, right in the middle. That's what I thought it was.
And that, that makes sense, without a doubt.
And then horses etched in on either side?
Yeah. Nice idea.
Very good. Yes?
I, I just want to say, I really liked the, what I saw the first time. And then when you asked me to look at it a second time, I was thinking in my mind, how are they going to improve that? I really like it. But I really like this change. My, my compliments to the Song. This is...
Go back to the one that has the... Yeah, change it back again.
To the Jonas.
A nice, open design. I, I think it's really...
Yeah.
And remember, this is going to be ours for many, many, many years. And this open design and all, it was, I, this is really beautiful. I'm impressed. I'm, I'm, compliments. I'm, I can't say enough about it. I think it really is a gorgeous building. Now, and I liked it before, but looking at this, I'm, I, I think it's great. I love it. Looks good, really good. Can't wait.
Okay, yeah, 27.
And I also like the idea, Mayor, of the opportunity to use the food trucks in the Song design, too. So I think that's good. That's something that we're looking to do going forward in this area, so I think that's perfect. I think you got us.
Thank you very much. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for a motion to approve number 14, which is the agreement with Kaufman-Lynn.
Motion to approve number 14 agreement with Kaufman.
If you don't want me to interrupt, I have two more slides if you, if you want to hear them.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
We were so excited.
I thought you were going to make a motion on the design, so I apologize.
I mean, how?
But they're, we'll get there very quickly.
Thousands of days and ticking here, you know.
No, I just wanted to go over the timeline. Obviously, you're considering the contract now, which will occur momentarily.
Hold that, hold your breath on that.
Are there early site work? We anticipate starting March 2025. That's building foundation. Site improvements with vertical construction starting in March 2026, with the completion June of 2027.
No way of expediting that part?
We'll do everything we can, but again, again, the feedback we're getting tonight is great, and we appreciate it. And now I'll turn it back over to the mayor. Remember, we're asking for three motions, a motion on the 30%, number 14, and number 16. Thank you.
So there's a motion...
You made the motion to approve number 14. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. I needed a motion related to the approving the 30% design, including the site plan.
Motion to approve the 30% design and site plan.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Now we have number, item 16, which is the second reading, the code amendment related to site plans. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Starkey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
We're on the way, finally.
Quick, I'll meet you there tomorrow.
Okay.
Bring the shovels.
Yeah, I've got some gold shovels.
I still have a gold shovel. I'll use the same one. It's in my office. I'll use the same one.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is number 17. It's a code amendment. And this must be a second reading. Mr. Sherwin, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the Town of Davie, Florida, amending the following sections of Chapter 12 Land Development Code, Article 3, Use Regulations, Section 12-34, Standards for Specific Uses, Article 5 Development Standards, Section 12-81.2 Multi-Family Residential Districts, Section 12-81.3 Commercial/Other Non-Residential Districts, Repealing Section 12-90, Exceptional... 12-90, Exceptions to Certain Residential Development Standards, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak for or against, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions, counsel? May I have a motion to approve the code amendment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Starkey.
Yes.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. And we have a couple of variances that we have been bringing. Okay. The first one is, um, number 18. Mr. Sherwin, would you read the resolution by title?
A resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on variance application V21-121 Bonfini, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this can come forward at this time. Ah, big guns.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and mayors and members of the council. My name is Rod Finer. I'm sorry. My name is Rod Finer. Is that better? Thank you. I'm an attorney with Coker &amp; Finer, 1404 South Andrews Avenue. I have the honor of representing the property owner, Eleonora Bonfini and Donna Piero. Um, this is a variance to permit to structures that admittedly are after the fact, and I'm well aware of, of coming for after-the-fact permits or after-the-fact variances. Let me say this right at the beginning, that this variance coming before you right now is the first of many steps, if approved, that the owners would have to go through, which they will go through. They have to get after-the-fact building permits, which they will do. Um, they can't even apply for the permits and go through the review until we satisfy the zoning requirements. Um, and so that's the necessary, this is the necessary first step. Then it will go through the entire building permit review. If it cannot beat building permit, um, requirements, for instance, it fails inspections, or they have to see something, the owners understand that that requires the demolition of these after, that these structures that were already constructed by a contractor who didn't get permits, unfortunately. But we're aware of that. We also understand that we've already talked to Central Broward Water Control District. They don't have issues with the variance. We know we have to contain all our own stormwater on the property. My architect is here, as are the owners. They've done the calculations. Um, they believe that this is not going to be a problem for these variances, and we know that we have to satisfy Central Broward and stormwater requirements. Otherwise, this goes away. So let me just say that is at the very, very beginning, we understand that. I want to stipulate that on the record, um, so the city attorney knows and everything, and that if you wanted to, I think it's already a condition of your proposed variance, if this were to be granted, that the variance is solely, solely conditioned on the, the plans with, associated with this application, and that the variance is conditioned upon us getting after-the-fact building permits within six months or eight months because of the review process. So we're well aware of that, and we can do that. I also very quickly, and I have a full PowerPoint if you wanted to see it, um, I also wanted to address the hardship real quick on this, on this issue, um, especially with the accessory structure. Because this property is unique in that it's located on a corner lot, um, where it has its side yard frontage is actually on the adjacent, is adjacent to the roadway, this property is required to have a 30-foot setback, uh, for the side yard. A 30-foot setback for the side yard is where the edge of the house is. So it basically means that you could not put any type of accessory structure legally without any type of variance in this area. Um, it would be the only building or development in this neighborhood which would not have that ability to put something in its side yard, because this property has a 30-yard setback instead of the otherwise 15-yard set, side setback that all the other homes in this area has. In addition, there's a little portion of this property, this property is not a complete square, um, and I can show you the aerial in just a minute. There's a portion of the property that's cut out where a sewer lift station is that belongs to the local Ute party. The shed along the rear of the property actually matches up with that lift station, so it looks like it's sort of one overall little development, even though there's a fence between the two. As a matter of fact, um, where the lift station is located, the shed that at the rear of the prac, of the property is located in direct line with the, with the lift station. So the property looks like it's all one coordinated piece. And the other thing is, is where the accessory structure used to be, there was a tiki hut for 10 or 12 years previously existing, at least over 10 years. That tiki hut, because of hurricanes and some other issues, had to be taken down. As a matter of fact, when it started to fall, my clients noticed that there were some animals that were sneaking into their property and going into the neighborhood along with that, and they didn't want to recreate that by putting a new tiki hut in, which is why they did the more permanent structure. Um, and that's why this type of structure was, was given. And what it basically is, it's an outdoor eating area, an outdoor area for the pool. Um, there are pictures, which I'll show you in the PowerPoint very quickly, um, that, of what the structure is. So if you could go to the PowerPoint very quickly. I don't have a thing, so I'll just. This was from playing in zoning, but it's still. Thank you. So this is the property as a whole, as you can see, um, and you can see the little corner, the top left corner, that's the cutout where the lift station is, right? That's not owned by my client's property. That's actually a cutout. And what you can see here is because of Southwest 76th Avenue, which is not the property frontage, that requires a 30-foot setback. Um, and the structure that we're talking about is, I don't know if you'll be able to see this on your side of the screen, but it's, it's located just to the south of the, um, lift station. And you can see it there. It's called variance A. That was what the, the item would be. And so you could see, here's a picture of what we're talking about. When I say it's really an outdoor kitchen area, though it does have a roof, um, and you can see how the roof goes right over the property line, but the table is set back in a little bit more. Um, this is, that's also the, uh, the structure as it looks from the house, is what you can see. And then this, again, looking at the, the structure we're talking about with the, that's located along the side of the property. That's the roofing material. It was done by a licensed contractor. I, not going back. Does it go back? The gold one goes back. Ah. So you could see the, the roofing structure. Again, this will all be inspected, signed off by the building department. My architect is here. We've hired engineering for this. They've actually looked at the structure. They certify that it's safe and that it meets hurricane codes, and it will have to. Like I said, this variance doesn't exempt it from having to meet hurricane codes or any other requirements of the building department. It still needs to meet all of those requirements. This is just the necessary first step. And this is the, the shed that we're talking about along the rear of the property. Um, as you can see, there is, I want to be very clear, there is no plumbing in there. Um, there is no kitchen in there. It's not me calling it a shed, and in reality, it's going to be a mother-in-law house or something like that. It is literally a shed. Um, my clients do a lot of gardening on their property. As a matter of fact, they distribute fruits and vegetables that they grow on their property to other people in the, in their own neighborhood, and they put a lot of their tools in some of like their soil and stuff in this, in this building. So it's not being used to live in. It's not being used for anything. It is clearly, and it will always be, a shed. And you can see how that relates to the rear of the property, where there's a fence separating that and, and along with that. Um, you can see, that's how it looks along the rear of the property. It's only in the one little corner. Um, I do want to point out, going back very quickly, that this is also actually very set far back from the roadway. If you look at the aerial, and you can see where the, the red line is the property boundary, my client's property boundary, you can see that there's actually about 30, 35 feet from the physical roadway to my client's boundary. So we are, this structure is, even though it's zero foot, it is actually set back very far from the adjacent roadway, in addition to which it's set back 15 feet approximately from the existing sidewalk that's there. So it's not right up where the public would be walking or doing anything. It is buffered and set back. And as part of your backup material, you have letters from at least six or seven people in the neighborhood, including one that was just sent recently, where the neighbors are supportive of this variance. Um, they don't have any issue with what's been done. It's been there for three years, and the tiki hut was there for, like I said, over 20 years. I can go forward and show you just very quickly. Well, let me deal with this. The, the, the other two variances that were part of the staff report deal with this, uh, front accessway, that was in existence before my clients ever purchased the property. It's actually not subject of the code violation, and we found out about this because of a code violation, as you saw in your backup material. And that's why we're working to address it. But when staff was analyzing the request and they saw the survey, they said, you might as well come in, correct everything that might have been there from the beginning of time onward. So that little entryway and walkway was existing from the time my clients purchased the property, you know, in 2006, I think is when they purchased the property. Um, going back, you can see this is the 2024 aerial. The 2020 aerial, you can see that the cheeky hut was where it is in the same location, and that's even shown right here in the 2016 aerial. They did expand the little paver deck in their backyard a little bit. Again, that would meet the side setback if the side setback were 15 feet, not 30 feet, the paver area I'm talking about. Um, so, just so we're clear, the paver area is basically this that they put pavers in. It goes about 20 feet into the setback or away from the wall. Um, that's significant because, again, because of the specific nature of this property and the hardship of this property being situated on the corner lot, we'll have to have a 30, 30-foot setback. If we had a 15-foot side setback, which all the other homes in the development have for their side setback, there would be no necess, there would be no necessity for the side paver, um, and the, the little paver setback. So again, that's done specifically because this property just happens to have two, the equivalent of two frontages. Um, and again, just going to the last slide. Again, 2016, you can see in 2010, you can even see that that cheeky hut was there in its same location. We just replaced the cheeky hut with a more, for lack of a better word, permanent-type structure, though a tiki hut is pretty permanent. It just could be taken down and rebuilt. This one is now concrete. And again, I want to iterate, my clients understand that after-the-fact behavior should not be rewarded. And they, they are, you can call them up, they are apologetic of that. They had a associate who was referred to them by a friend who was a general contractor during COVID, put this in. I know COVID is not an excuse, nor am I asserting it as an excuse. Town Hall was open. Town Hall did process permits during that time period. For whatever reason, the contractor didn't do that. If they would have known permits were required, they would have gotten permits, and they would have asked for the variance then. We are just trying to make it right now. They are expended significant sums getting an architect and engineer. The architect and engineer has also fa, found a contractor who was not the contractor who did this originally. We're starting from scratch and getting a new contractor who will put their name on the permits, be there for the city building officials and city inspectors to look at this and sign off on it, and make sure it meets code and does what's right. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Where shall I start?
Mayor, incidentally, the quas has been waived. All the quas has.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was in a public, didn't I open the public hearing for him to speak? I think I.
Yes.
I think I did. Is, before I say, is anybody else that wants to speak in the open chair? Okay.
Evan doesn't believe you did open a public.
What?
It wasn't opened.
Yes, I did.
Thought it was.
Yeah, because I said anybody who wishes to speak for, and he got up. So I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Um, I have a question to start with. First of all, I, from what I understand, a tiki hut doesn't need a permit because of the nature of it. Um, so that argument doesn't.
Yes and no, ma'am.
Yeah, so, anyway, but when I looked at the original pictures, was there all trees back there? Did those trees have to be taken out in order to put all those things in?
And some of the pavers, yes, ma'am, they were.
And what kind of trees were they?
You can come up, come up. Say your name. Say, say your name and.
I'm definitely not the best speaker. Hi, councilmembers, I'm Donna Piero. I reside at the home for 21 years. I've been a business owner in Davie. I pay taxes.
Just answer the question. That's fair.
Bottom line, what was happening was the electric company kept coming out because the trees were hitting the wires and catching on fire. Plus, there were coconut trees, and we have three dogs that don't equal seven pounds, and they were coming down like torpedoes.
So they, they were palm trees? They were not shade trees?
Yes, but we replaced them with smaller palm trees.
Okay.
And the shed that was there was also there when we bought the house.
Where did you put the, the new palm trees? Because you wouldn't have had any room back there?
Yeah.
Because you put, they're all paved?
They're all right there. No, no. There's a walkway, and then there's rocks, and the palm trees are in there. Let's see if you can see that.
Oh, those rocks. I saw that picture.
There you go.
That's in the back?
That's in the back.
That's where the tiki hut was?
Yes. No, the tiki hut's on the other side.
Was there, the shed is showing a shed.
Right, the shed was right there. It was a little bit smaller, but still up against the bog's wall. And all we did was, it was a metal that had a lecture, and that's all we did.
I was just making sure we weren't taking down any native trees or.
No, 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 not at all. Not at all. Thank you.
Your, your attorney, uh, is a fine speaker and makes a very good argument for you, but as was said before, you know, an after-the-fact permit is something that we find very difficult to deal with. I will say, though, that you do have the corner lot syndrome. We've gone through this before on a number of properties, and some consideration can be given for, for that. What bothered me really is that so much of it was covered. The only green that you have now is in, basically, it looks like in the front yard, and I, I can't imagine what your runoff is like in a, in a big storm and where that water is going.
Wait for her to finish.
Uh, that, that, that's a, a big question, too. Um, my biggest problem, it has, it's the walkways and, and the patio, and I granted that was there when you bought it to the front door. It's just that so much green has been eliminated for, um, you know, drainage, that, that could have been drainage, uh, purposes. Um, so you've got a 20 by 15 covered patio, which is the kitchen, right?
The outdoor dining area, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, outdoor dining room. Then you have the walkway on the west side. Then you have the walkway on the patio from the driveway to the front door and the 14 by 15 storage building. Those are the four things that we're looking at today, right?
Yes, ma'am. And the, and the front walkway, just so you know, we didn't do that. That's already been, that was there. Um, and you heard my client on the other two, and with, and with the surface water. Go ahead, Ms. Vera, just one second.
Yeah, you know, so I, you know, it's, it's very difficult. Um, you, you, you do make a very good point, and you're going to follow and make sure everything is done properly, and if anything isn't done properly, you're going to fix it or change it. Um, but I still, I'm torn because I do have this issue, and I very rarely vote for a variance where the, it's not a clear hardship. The, the, the corner lot, mm, maybe, but I'm, I'm still off here. I want to see her.
I, I do understand. I will just say, thank you, uh, Mayor, and Ms. Vera wants to talk about the drains real quick. And I understand, we still have to, we believe we satisfy the drainage, but I understand the concern about runoff. And trust me, the town engineer who we talked to before, in DRC before getting here, has told us that he will be looking at the drainage numbers very, very carefully. Um, so the town engineer, as well as Central Broward, but the town engineer has already commented that he's aware of those issues and potential concerns when he looked at that, and he is going to hold us to the letter of the law, which we're okay with, by the way. Let me just say that. Um, our, our architect is here. He's done the preliminary engineering studies when we had to go to Central Broward, and we've already met with the district director there. They don't seem to have a problem. I will say that be, just real quick, and I understand the concern, is the corner lot syndrome in this case is very real, because the 15-foot setback with the house being set back basically 30 feet from the roadway leaves a much smaller outdoor dining area than what could be done right now. I mean, I understand that this right now is a zero setback, so even if we gave five feet or seven-foot setback, um, that, that's not going to permit this size structure, this, the existing setback with what it is. But go ahead and talk about the runoff real quick.
So if you look at the tiki hut, well, the gazebo now, to the, um, north side of it, we've already taken out about 16 by 12 feet of paver. already taken out about 16 by 12 feet of pavers. Then if you look at the east side, facing east, we were gonna take out another three feet all the way from Boggs's wall to our house.
I read that in the do thing.
So, and like I said, we will deal with that, okay.
Do you have a picture of that?
Of what's being taken out?
Yes.
No, ma'am, if you want that before voting, we could continue, so I could come back and just show you that one picture, and we can move on.
Well, I have another question. I know after we talked the other day, a lot of impervious area, and you mentioned that all the runoff would go into the pool. What happens when the pool overfills?
Well, not only the pool, but some runoff goes to the pool, some runoff will percolate through the area. There is actual space in where those pavers are, and that's also why you have the river rock. It's grass under the river rock, so that's actually a percolation area. The pavers don't go all the way under that. So the pool is sort of an emergency overflow in case you get one of those very, very large storm events. But this will drain appropriately. So it will use the percolation for the river rock and everything else like that. And Mr. Ronberg, who's an architect with DTI Architects, can, like I said, he's run the numbers, he can come up and address all those type of questions for you.
Is there a pitch? I'm sorry.
I would just, that's the first time I've ever heard about using your pool for your runoff.
For an emergency runoff, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Is there a pitch to the yard?
Yes.
Where is the pitch? Which way does it flow?
Yeah, I'll speak in the microphone, ma'am.
Well, let's find out.
So now it's going down to where we took out the pavers, it goes down the walkway to the house, and then to the left side of-
So it goes west?
-the tiki hut. That's all garden there, so that's another access for rain to go that way.
So it pitches to the west?
To the west and the east. Yeah, no, sorry, most of it goes to the west, sorry. But if I take out the east side, I believe some will go that way as well.
Well, then it goes into your neighbor's yard.
There's a, oh, it's a fence there, we'll stop it going into the neighbor's yard, and we're gonna hold it. And like I said, let me say this, the law is very, very strict. We are not allowed to discharge surface water off of our property, right? Black letter law, agree with that, we're aware of that 100%. We cannot discharge off our property. So if this variance were to be granted, okay, and I understand it's an if, if this variance were to be granted, when we go through engineering review, which we couldn't even do before coming here, we cannot move forward and get any type of permits to do after-the-fact permits and get after-the-fact permits approved if we don't satisfy surface water, which shows we are not draining onto adjacent properties or doing anything like that. We have to satisfy code. The problem is, is we've done the review and think we meet it, it has not been reviewed by town engineering. If the town wanted to, all right, my clients will undertake the quote "risk" end quote because they did this without permits. If you want to continue this, and we'll re-advertise it, let me say that, and allow this to move through the permitting process so that you have the full permitting review of all the other disciplines, you know, structural, electrical, surface water and engineering, and then we come back to you with a fully approved set of plans that have been vetted through staff, we don't have an issue doing that. We're gonna have to do that anyway. So it's not like we're not doing something we wouldn't do. The point is that we couldn't even apply for those or move through those because we couldn't get past the zoning review first. That's why we're here above that. But if you want to table this indefinitely, which means it'd have to be re-advertised, and we'll pay the re-advertising costs, I understand that, and instead authorize this to go through full building permit review before it comes back to you, we're okay with that. We're not trying to pull something over here or hide something or do anything else like that. I just want that to be very clear.
Yeah, that's a good point, because I was gonna say to you, I would have really liked to have seen the engineering and the district water reports before, because to approve a variance and then say, okay, you're gonna do this, 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 and this. No, I want to see the other side.
Then I would suggest you just do that, and we'll, understanding everything that I've put on the record.
Well, I want to make one more comment. I have a PVC fence, similar to yours. It does not stop water.
Okay.
It goes up under it.
So then I would suggest, respectfully, understanding your comments and understanding that you would, that you, from what I'm hearing from at least the two town council people that spoke here, let's continue it indefinitely, knowing what needs, and as part of that continuance, authorize the building permit review process. No permits will be issued until we come back before you, when you rule on the variance, one way or the other. But at least this way, we can go through all that and get that done.
Mayor, Phil Sherman, I think they would have to table it to a date certain and not indefinitely.
Well, I can do that a year in advance, change it. Marlon, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I have a question.
My apologies. I had a question, and probably Mr. Diaz can answer this for. I noticed, you know, that's not concrete back there, that's, I would call it interlocking pavers, even though they're big. Does the town look at that the same as concrete, or is, because that percolates, is it a different grade?
Town of Davie building official, William Diaz. That question is gonna be engineering, the one that's gonna be, that can answer that question, because it's gonna be part of the drainage of the lot.
Okay, okay.
A.J. O'Jara, this is the town engineer. That is not considered pervious. We look at it as concrete.
You look at it as concrete?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wondered, because I thought it would percolate some, so I was confused with that.
We've spoken about this during the DRC meetings, and I'm well aware of how the town engineer views this.
I will say this, you know, we want people to take care of their place. And this place is, you've done a beautiful job. You made a mistake. But this is gonna cost you a lot of money. If you're having to hire an engineer to come back out there, you're having to hire a contractor now who's gonna have to pull a permit, and he didn't do the work, and now you have an attorney up here talking, you're getting, she's getting-
Well, they're doing that whether we approve it or not, anyway, so.
Well, she wouldn't have the, no, she's paying more doing it how she's doing now. She's gonna pay more for the permit. She's paying, she's paying a lot more.
Well, it's still a cost. It's a cost whether you keep it or you tear it down. I mean, it's still a cost either way you look at it.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I don't like after-the-fact permits. I'm a licensed general contractor, it's what I do for a living. You have to pull permits. That's the world we live in, you pull permits. When you don't pull permits, we have to look at the whole, you know, the whole thing, you know, what do we gain if we make her take that down as a town? Do we really gain by making somebody that has a good-looking place? If you can pass, and this is the if, if you can pass the engineering, if you can pass the other stuff here that they're gonna make you jump through, I will support it. If you can't do it, well, then you have a problem. Then you'll have to deal with what they want. Maybe they'll want you to take, to leave your gazebo-type thing and your, take up some of your pavers, I don't know. But if you can pass that, I would probably support this. But in the future, don't do this again. It puts us in a bad way, we too, you know. Yeah, and it's, I get it, I get it. But it's a tough thing.
Thank you. Susan, you wanted to say something?
Well, yeah, a couple of things, too. And for one, the property owner said that they've been there for 20 years. When they bought the home, they realized they were on a corner, and they realized they had those constraints when they bought their property, because they did get a survey, and they do have, and they know what the setback should be. So the fact that we're looking at an after-the-fact bothers us a great deal. And when we look at the drainage issue, you can say, you know, it's black, and I can say it's white, but we know that the engineering studies that we've seen over the years, many of us, for many, many years, knows that this doesn't cut it, not at all. And, you know, to me, it's a waste of time and effort, both on the applicant, lovely home, but it just doesn't seem to be able to drain appropriately, I'm sure. And I've been facing drainage problems all over town. We have been, there's a fly, sorry about that.
But we don't know that it doesn't drain properly.
We've been facing drainage problems all over town. And some of these issues are self-created, some because maybe the area's been old and just doesn't drain well. But I can see where taking a lot of the green space and trees out doesn't allow for the percolation, which is a natural way of this drainage being able to. There should be a way to hold your water on site. The fact that you say there's, you know, the palm trees, and that's very little to do to help the drainage. And rocks, they don't hold, they don't help percolate the drainage either. I know for a fact, they don't. They just pool, and then they settle for a while, and usually it floods somewhere else first. The tiki hut, I could see, maybe, that's not a, I don't have a big angst over that because it seems like it's inconforming and allowing for, but I was concerned, I see that you took some of the area out in front of the tiki hut, I guess that's to the east, that is now pervious in that area, which is a start, that's a good thing. But the fact that then you turned around and paved the rest of the area with more pavers and stone, although pretty, it doesn't meet the standards for drainage properly. And I'm not one who wants to grant these types of variances either, not even on a first reading, not even after a tabling. I could tell you, I'm kinda cranky that way sometimes, like the mayor. If it's a small, if we're looking about a few feet, we kind of look at those few feet and we say, well, maybe that's different because you have now a swale perhaps that was created, and that still allows for the drainage. I'm willing to deny it now, and if you can come up with a plan, and you want to work on the side with our engineers and see what you can come up with, then maybe that's the better way to go, because right now I don't see that it's proper at all.
I thought they were gonna move the table.
I had suggested doing that for, say, six months, if you wanted time certain. Six months, which would give us time to go through the building permit process. This plan might change during that time, and then we would reintroduce it that time. I do hear what you're saying, Councilperson Starkey.
Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Starkey.
And I don't correct anybody, just to let you know, but that's how I feel about this.
And I, let me just say, I do respect how you feel, and I understand that. The reason why I would suggest a continuance is if my client's willing to go through the expense, and I think Councilperson Lewis has summarized quite eloquently the expense it's gonna go, recognize that if there's a denial here tonight, that prohibits my client from coming back for one year. So it means that unless there's a waiver, or I come back and ask separately for a waiver or something like that, or there's a substantial change in the plans, I can't do what you had suggested of work with staff and come back, because I'm prohibited by the one-year prohibition. So that's why I would suggest the six-month tabling. And let me just say this, I've heard what you said loud and clear as my client. I don't know that six months, even if we come back with all the permit plans being approved, that's gonna change your vote, nor am I suggesting it would one way or the other. I've heard what you said loud and clear. But that's why I would prefer that there not be a vote tonight, and that be continued to that six-month time period because of that one-year prohibition.
So I also yield to the councilmember of the district to see how she feels, and I know she's concerned about the drainage as well, so.
And that's what we'll handle during the permitting review process.
I'll see what she, no, I hear you, but doesn't mean you get your way.
I'm in agreeance with him coming back in six months. To see what he's got.
Yeah, that's fair. I think that's fair.
Make a motion to table, and I think April's a bit of a problem because of the number of meetings we're gonna have that month, so.
May's fine.
I'm gonna say May of 2025.
You need a motion?
If you, it's her district, we're gonna let her.
I think Mr. Sherman, Sherwin, will tell you, you need a specific date, either first or second meeting in May would be fine, but I think you need to specify which date in order for it to satisfy the legal requirements.
Mayor, if I may, Tom Clark, it would be either May 7th or the 21st.
21st.
My wife will love me for being here on our anniversary.
Well, if you make it fast, then you go ahead and ask her.
She won't, trust me, she won't.
It'll be 30 years after, she'll-
Okay, so, Michelle, would you like to make a motion to table this to May 21st, 2025?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion to table this project till May 21st.
2025.
2025.
And it's been seconded?
And Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, he should understand that he's doing this at his client's own risk.
Understood. I think I put that on the record, but we understand completely.
You want me to put that in the motion?
That would be appropriate.
Would you accept that onto the motion?
Mr. Sherman, can you repeat that so she can put it to the motion?
That's at the owner's risk.
That he's undertaking this review process at his own risk. He understands that there's no-
I guarantee.
Guarantee that you're gonna vote some, one way or the other.
Right, that even if we get all, I'll say it specifically on the record, that even if we get sign-offs from all the departments and they approve everything, that doesn't obligate the town council one way or the other to vote to approve the variances, it's just more backup for you to consider at the time of the vote.
We know that. Thanks for telling us.
Your town attorney wanted me to say it, so I did.
Marlon did.
Yes, Councilmember Lewis.
Okay, Marlon, would you accept that addition to the amendment?
It's fair.
Okay.
It's fair.
And because it's a quasi, we have to do a roll call.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Starkey?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And I have a question. You said there will be other variances that may be coming again in the future?
No, 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 no. They might be modified so there are less or something like that. They're not, we're not adding on to this.
Okay.
Reluctantly.
Thank you.
This is variance night. Oh, by the way, that was Vincent Price that was buzzing you before.
Oh, yeah. That's what it was.
Okay, this is number 19, this variance. Mr. Sherman, would you read the resolution by title?
A resolution of the Town of Davie, Florida, taking final action on variance, application V. 23-064. Garner providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. I see the applicant is here. Would you, this is an open public meeting, would you like to make a statement?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. We've seen, I've seen the, what you did.
Hello, my name's Matthew Garner. I'm the homeowner at the proposed property, above property. As our last meeting went, I spoke with you, and we went over some of your concerns about the property. And one of your recommendations was remove the concrete drive and put something that's more pervious, like rock or something. After speaking with my wife and everything, we determined that we would rather keep it grass. If the concrete is not what you want, I've been driving across the grass to park my airboat where it's at for, since I bought the house in 2020. So to keep doing what I'm doing, the grass is not dead, it's, you know, I don't drive on it enough to really do that. So with that being said, I kept, I removed the concrete completely, I didn't put rock, I left it grass, and I shrunk the building down by five feet by the width of the building, so it removed like 150 square feet from the building. As we spoke about, you said you didn't like the size of the building. There was no specific number that was given on what would be an acceptable size, so I spoke with my wife, and, you know, we decided that by shrinking it to that size, we feel we compromised. And then as well, it still is a building that we can be happy with, with, you know, whatever we decide to do in the future, you know? I'd hate to build a building and then look back at it and be like, man, I wish I would have just had five feet on it, you know? So I feel like I compromised to a pretty good standard, and I hope everyone on the board is okay with that.
Okay. Anybody else likes to speak in the public? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. No, I appreciate that, and you heard with the discussion there, we're really worried about putting concrete over and not having enough area for drainage. So I appreciate that you did that, you did make the building a little smaller, and based on that, I'm prepared- prepared to...
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Wait a minute, I just want to add, I want to add something to it. We, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve with the stipulation that the unpermitted building is taken down, which you have to anyway in order to put the new building up.
Oh, the shed, yeah.
Yes.
I'll get rid of it.
And that you will be removing all the containers from the property.
Yep. I don't like the look of the container.
Yes, I know.
But it's, it's easy storage. So I got my jet ski in there, I got my four-wheeler in there, you know?
So now you can get rid of those?
Everything will be gone. It will be the single building and the existing shed that's up by the house, because that's where my wife's...
And that was permitted.
That's where the, the Christmas decorations are. It was there when we bought the house.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know. It's on the original survey from when we bought it. I'm assuming it was permitted.
Okay, well, we'll leave it at that. Did you want to make?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'm not sure how to add all that in.
Everything she said.
Yeah, everything Judy said, it was an American, it's good outside. But, so you're, you're saying that you'll, let, let me go back. You're going to get rid of the storage. Motion approved, but the storage containers out there are going to go.
Yep.
And the shed that was unpermitted.
And the shed that was unpermitted, which you said you were going to take out.
Gone.
Well, he's already agreed to that, so. So I, I think he's been rather cooperative.
Okay.
Definitely.
Is there... Huh?
Good-looking, good-looking place.
Oh, thank you. I'm trying to make it better. You know, I don't want to be the junkyard in your neighborhood.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
That was a lot easier.
Good job.
Okay. Number 20. On this table, that closes our public hearing portion. I keep turning that light on. We have the three proclamations that are here, the IT Professionals Day, National Diver Need Awareness Week, and Private Fire Prevention Week. Do we have any committee or board appointments to make? Anybody come up with somebody for the MBO Advisory Committee? No, still looking. Okay. So let's see. We don't have a meeting October 2nd. It's Rosh Hashanah, so as I start my comments, I want to make sure I wish everyone a Happy New Year in our Jewish community. I'm just going to go first. I have a couple of things. I had a very big surprise yesterday at the Veterans Breakfast. There was a member, and it was funny, because a gentleman came up to me. He says, I'm from the Department of Defense. I'd like to say a few words. I said, well, you know, we have Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz is here to speak. I don't know what her schedule is, but we'll have her speak first, and then you can come up. And Rick says to me, go up, go up. So in the meantime, he took the mic and one of our employees, and this is, this was the most wonderful thing in the world for me, Alexander Santos, who's a Public Works employee, Navy Reserve, 17 years, petty officer, second class, nominated me for employer support of the Guards and Reserve as a patriotic employer. And he read the recognition and between him and the gentleman, Peter, from the Department of Defense, gave me these, this beautiful... What do you call them?
Certificate.
Certificates. I figured I'd pass them down and let you look at it.
We didn't get to see him that day.
I was just really, really surprised and, and very honored.
It's beautiful.
And I was told that there are very few elected officials
That was very nice.
that get this recognition. And apparently, I'm one of the only ones in South Florida that has gotten it, so. But you know what? Like I had, I said yesterday, what we do for our veterans between the breakfast and the Veterans Day and the things that we have passed to help them out with their, their taxes and their fire assessment, and it's just because we love our veterans.
Mm-hmm.
They have done so much for us. There isn't enough that we can do for them. And I'm very passionate, you all know that, about everything I do. And I am very passionate about our veterans. Yesterday, we served 116
Yeah.
veterans and spouses. We must have had about 10 volunteers, and I was wondering, how come so many people from staff showed up? There, there had to have been 10 staff people there at least. And then I, I figured it out.
Surprise.
They all knew that I was getting this.
Surprise.
So I really appreciate that I, that I had so much support. And then the best part was having Congressman Debbie Wasserman Schultz. I said, did you guys team up to do this?
No.
And neither of them knew that the other one was going to be there. I said, boy, the stars were aligned yesterday. And that she was there to share that with me. And she did a really, very nice job, meeting with the veterans one-on-one and trying to, her aide, Michael, they took down a lot of information to help people that have some issues and problems. And she spent a little bit of time talking about the most recent benefits that have been passed by the government for the veterans and the VA. So all in all, I just want to thank my council and staff for supporting these cockamamie ideas that I come up with from time to time. Because without your help, I mean, Parks, Recreation and Culture Affairs, they work so hard to get that breakfast put together and set up the room. And it's really, it's such a team effort. And when I receive this, I receive it for everybody. And I want to thank everybody that helps and participates. And the gentleman from Department of Defense said he's going to be coming at a later date to, for a presentation for the town, to recognize the town as support, for supporting the veterans. So I'm looking forward to that. And I'm sorry I took all my time talking about that. I have a few other things.
I yield my time.
Thank you. Just very quickly, Davie Air Land Trust had a meeting last night, and they had requested, I'm going to ask, if in the first meeting in December, we can give them three to five minutes to do a presentation. They're celebrating their 20th year anniversary this year, and it seemed possible that...
(bell dings)
Yes, I heard you. And so they want to do a little presentation of PowerPoint to show the council and the public what they've been doing and what their accomplishments and some of the easements that they're holding and everything. So I'd appreciate if you would do that. Mr. Pollman and I have been talking to McKinley Castilla, who is one of our new Miss Orange Blossom Queens. And she's Western High School. She's also a junior ROTC member, very, very active. And what she wants to do, her younger brother is autistic and nonverbal, and has faced a lot of challenges. And what she's proposing is installing communication boards in our local playgrounds to assist children who are non-speaking. And, you know, she sent me all the information, shared it with Mr. Pollman. We've talked about it, and I know he's responded to her. What a great project for one of our queens to be working on during her reign, and then for us to partner with her. And as I was looking through it, it's, it's not a great expense, and it's something that I, I think we... It's just, it's amazing what these young people want to do and, and accomplish. So I'm looking forward to that. And I want to thank Mr. Pollman for responding to her and for saying that he would, he would work with that. And I think that's what I've got right now. I'll go to Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, September 21st, we celebrate Davie. Join us in kicking off the fall season at the Town of Davie's Free Celebrate Davie. On Saturday, 21st, from 4:00 to 8:00, at the Bergeron Rodeo Grounds located at 4201 Rodeo Way. On Wednesday, October 2nd, at the Davie's Women's Club, we'll have Coffee with a Cop from 8:00 to 11:00. And that address is 6551 Orange Drive. On Saturday, October 5th, we have the Garden Matters Day at Robbins Preserve from 10:00 to 1:00. On Tuesday, October 15th, we have another Veterans Breakfast at the Pine Island Multipurpose Center at 9:30. And I would also like to thank Jeff and his staff, the Parks and Recreation Department, for all of the help and everything that was done at the Veterans Breakfast. And a big special thank you to Grace, Evelyn, and Leona for all that they did. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Since you gave me all your time.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Lots of meetings to attend, Florida League of Cities and so forth. I've been pretty busy with the league and obviously following a lot on the incinerator issue too. And I know that we've been getting information on that, a lot of it. And so I know it may not sound like it impacts everybody, but it really does, because the future of our waste is, is here. So I would encourage everybody to continue to follow that issue. Actually, I don't have anything really pressing, so I yielded it. I let it go.
Thank you.
Carol?
I don't have very much. I, I want to follow Councilmember Whitman's thoughts on the Parks and Rec. I mean, you guys are amazing. The amount of veterans that we served this past Tuesday was just incredible, and they all enjoyed themselves. And it's just so nice to see them all getting together and talking and enjoying each other's company. So I, I enjoy the breakfast myself also very much, to see them all enjoying themselves. So thank you, Jeff and your staff. Thank you. That's it.
Marlon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at my notes, and Michelle covered the celebrate Davie on Saturday. Everything, everything I've had has slowly been, been marked down. And even the last thing I had here was to thank the budget team, Mr. Lamack, for all that you've done. And that, and so being the last one, you all took, took everything away from me. But while I'm sitting up here, I want to just brag about something I did today. At my office, the girls had bought a, it's kind of shelf to put paper and different things on, and they'd got it from Ikea, and it took them, it, you know, it was a job to put that together. And so today, I went to Ikea and said, I'm going to bring this back, and I'll put it back together in less than a minute. They're looking at me like I'm totally nuts. And I went back and I got it. I put it together in less than a minute. And they still won't, won't give me any kind of kudos for it. They said anybody could buy a throw rug and throw it down, but hey, it did come from Ikea, so. So it's still a win. This is how I look at it. So with that, God bless everyone.
Thank you. I just thought of, one thing I wanted to add about the Veterans Breakfast. We had three World War II vets there. Our friend Smitty's turning 101 next month. We had a gentleman from Oakmont Village, who's 102, and then gentleman by name of Ralph, who's 98. So they, it was very nice to have three World War II vets. And I almost forgot, you know, I have my nails all sparkly for this event. Coming up on Friday, the Davie Chaz Society is opening their season at Zona Village, Friday night at 7:00. And I can't understand how it happened, but I'm going to be doing a little something there as part of the, the entertainment for the evening. I got my start in the theater, so it should be interesting. A little autobiographical, but if you can, you should try to come out. Thanks. Mr. Lamack?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I do have a few things to share with you tonight. If you want to expand on my first one, that would be great, but I just wanted to share with you that on September 5th of 2024, the Broward County School Board Administrative Staff held a session at Western High School during their search for the new principal for Western High School. That evening, I think that the community that was present, from Davie, parents, as well as students and other faculty members, were pretty impressed that the Town of Davie took such a special interest in seeing our principal and being part of that and offering information. Mayor was there in attendance with myself, Chief Kinsey, Philip Holstein, John Legori from Code, all the SROs assigned to this school. Yeah, and of course, Jeff, right? Of course, Jeff. And there may be a couple other people. We had such a great turnout. I was so impressed with the students that offered input and the community about what they'd like to see in their new principal moving forward. Mayor, I don't know if you want to add to that before I go into my other things, if there's something else you want to add?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that, because as a result of that, and several students coming up to me, we're reinstituting this year the Public Affairs Academy. We're referring it to, what is it, Leona, internship, an internship program, so.
I wanted to hand that part off to you.
Okay, thank you. Forgot.
Thank you. My next announcement is on behalf of Chief Gonzalez and the Davie Fire Rescue Department, I'm pleased to share with you that Davie Battalion Chief, Anil Mara, has been selected as the recipient of the inaugural 2024 EMS Quality Improvement Award for the Florida Department of Health. This new, you can clap, but we'll do it at the end. This new award category was introduced by the Florida Department of Health Bureau of Emergency Medical Oversight, recognizes individuals or organizations for their exceptional contribution to enhancing patient care and improving clinical outcomes through EMS Quality Improvement Initiatives. I have shared while we're talking, if you look on the screen on the monitors, some highlights to Chief Mara's delivered Movement Training to 100% of cardiac arrest cases, which played a major role in creating the most out-of-hospital cardiac arrest survivors in a single year in Davie Fire Rescue's history. Chief Mara will receive the award Wednesday, October 24th, 2024, in Naples during the state EMS Advisory Board meeting. And I hope you'll join me in recognizing Chief Mara. My next item is I want to express my gratitude to the Budget and Finance Director, Mr. Ackerman, his dedicated team comprised of Colleen Ryan, Assistant Budget and Finance Director, Lucy Bernaf, Budget Analyst, and Cherie Haynes Dyer, the Budget Manager, who guided and demonstrated expertise that led us through the entire process. As with the prior years, Deputy Town Administrator, Maciana Lewis, and Assistant Town Administrator, Philip Holstein, are also essential throughout the process, coordinating with department directors and all our employees to share and receive information. So I wanted to share that with you. I have, also want to say that Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, once again, your community concern for our residents, business owners, and the environment have incorporated, been incorporated into the fiscal year 2025 budget. As with every year, transparency is our guiding principle.